...seven, zero, three, four, through three, two, seven, two, seven, seven, in the amount of four million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on November seventeenth of two thousand and fifteen. Request for approval of new business licenses. Request for approval of change order number three for Granite Construction on the thirty-five-hundred West Reconstruction Project. Are there any questions or comments on the consent items? Commissioner Eber, anything? Okay, Ricky, would you like to give us a brief overview?
You bet. For the purchase orders, for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, there were forty-seven of them. They were spread pretty evenly. Twenty percent was the largest purchase order for twenty-six thousand dollars for the jail, and this was for computer supplies and equipment. Fifteen percent or nineteen thousand dollars went for the garage, which was for supplies and tires. Thirteen percent or seventeen thousand was for the library, for a mower and a pedestrian stacker. Do you know what a pedestrian stacker is? I had to look it up. It's like a mini, it's like a mini forklift that the driver stands behind. So, I thought that was cool. Twelve percent or fifteen thousand dollars...
Never mind, okay, go ahead.
Went to the golden spike for chairs and maintenance. Eleven percent or fourteen thousand is for the landfill, and this was for fuel and temporary labor, and eight percent or eleven thousand dollars went for the gun range for a radiant heater. Two hundred and forty-four checks were issued this week for four point two million dollars. Half of that, or two point one million dollars, is for Public Works, and that's prime, almost exclusively for the flood mitigation project at the Little Weaver Cut Off. And then there was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Twelfth Street Project. And then nineteen thou, nineteen percent of that amount, or seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, went toward health and dental coverage for all county employees. And that's it. And if you'd like to use a pedestrian stacker, I'm sure there will be one on display out on Washington Boulevard in front of the building.
All right. Did you want to ask a question, Commissioner Eber?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thanks for the rundown. We, as we mentioned before, we have had these before us and reviewed them, and so we've seen these prior, but we appreciate the extra detail that's given, Ricky, to help the public to understand them. Any other, if there's no other questions, I'll take a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent items.
I'll second that. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Okay, to our action items, and I saw some public here today that I thought might be here for a particular issue, and it looks like they're here for item number five. So with that being the case, we'll move that to the top of our agenda so that these individuals... I mean, sometimes, I'll be honest, we kind of like it if people sit through our meeting so that they know what we do, but we also want to be very respectful of their time. And so, with that being the case, we'll move item number five to the top of our agenda, which is discussion and/or action on a request from Deborah Holdsworth on parcel number thirteen dash two oh five dash zero, 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 six, for two thousand and fourteen primary residential status. Joe?
Commissioners, good morning.
I'm here... Microphone down.
I'm here representing the Tax Review Committee. We were approached by Deborah Holdsworth who purchased parcel number thirteen, two oh five and six in October two thousand and thirteen. The previous owner of that parcel has had requested by signed affidavit that the taxable status of the parcel be identified as non-primary, meaning that the property would not receive the forty-five percent primary residential exemption. Again, Ms. Holdsworth purchased the property October two thousand and thirteen. Weaver County, by means of the two thousand and fourteen valuation notice and the tax bill, we identified the taxable status of the property, including the definition of what that taxable status was on, on the valuation notice. Ms. Holdsworth did, in fact, appeal the taxable status for two thousand and fifteen. That appeal was accepted by the board. She did provide criteria identifying that the property is her primary residence, and that status was granted for two thousand and fifteen. Unfortunately, Ms. Holdsworth did not appeal the two thousand and fourteen taxable status of the property. Tax Review Committee met to discuss that issue. Ms. Holdsworth attended that meeting. Through the discussion in the meeting, we identified the state tax commission's requirement that identifies that the property owner has the burden of proving the property qualifies for the residential exemption. We have in place a county ordinance that requires evidence to identify that primary residential status. We had input and recommendations from legal. Courtland Erickson attended the meeting, and based on all that information, the Tax Review Committee is recommending to the commission that the request for the two thousand and fourteen ta, change in taxable status be denied. And Ms. Holdsworth is here, she would like to address the commission if that'd be okay.
Great. Come on up. State your name for the record for us and where you live. Good to see you.
My name is Deborah Holdsworth, and I live at nine forty-seven East Canyon Road, number forty-eight, Ogden, eight four four oh four. I purchased the property in October two thousand and thirteen, and have lived there by myself since then. I went in and paid my taxes in two thousand and fourteen, not even thinking that it was... or how to even read the statement, not knowing there was a difference between the NP and MP, and to look for that. So I went ahead and paid the taxes in full, and then the following year, this year, two thousand and fifteen, I paid my taxes again, and I tried to pay them on, in a timely manner and so forth. And my elderly neighbor lady came by, and she's like, was complaining about paying her taxes, and hers were one half of mine. So when we started comparing notes, I was questioning it, so I came down and, and started doing some investigating and find out what the difference was. So, that's why I'm here today, is to request two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Joe, when, let me just ask a question here. According to the statute then, because we've had this, you know, similar challenges to this before, but according to the statute, when would it have had to be, when would the two thousand and fourteen taxes have had to be appealed in order for us to grant?
Taxable status of all properties, as a general statement, is identified, it may be identified as a factual error. So even for two thousand and fifteen, which that application deadline ended September fifteenth, legislatively a few years ago, the legislature extended the late appeal process to May thirty-first of the following year. So if somebody were to appeal through the Board of Equalization today for the taxable status for two thousand and fifteen, the, as a general statement, the board would accept that application because of the taxable status issue. If the property owner provided the application for residential exemption, they provided the criteria, you know, typically driver's license, something to prove that is their residency, that would, in fact, be allowed. The same timing was the same for two thousand and fourteen. So, Ms. Holdsworth could have appealed up through and including March thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. Since that appeal was not made, the Tax Review Committee feels that we do not have any standing on the issue because it is a Board of Equalization issue, and the property owner was given proper notice of the taxable status.
Okay, so Courtland, what are our legal options here? I mean, do we, do we have the ability to do anything here, even if, if we wanted, even if we thought we should or could?
Under these circumstances, where we believe this is something that should have gone to the Board of Equalization, March thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen would have been the cutoff, and ignoring a statutory deadline like that is not what we would, not what I would advise, because those deadlines are there for a reason. If we ignore them in one case, it calls into question ever applying the deadline. How do we justify ignoring it in one case and applying it in another case? And so, my recommendation would be to consider that March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen deadline to be the absolute cutoff for any appeal that should have been to the Board of Equalization in two thousand and fourteen, and that it's a late appeal.
Any questions?
Well, this is seemingly a broken record. Had this exact same issue with the NP and the P, and individuals new to a piece of property, not understanding the difference, I don't, have we, are we addressing our forms so that it's a little more explanatory, so we're not having the same issue over and over again?
We are consistently reviewing, identifying better practices on those forms. A number of years ago, through guidance of legal counsel, that's when the form, we identified the primary and non-primary with the definition. In, in our office specifically, we are attempting as much as we can to identify the correct taxable status of properties. In this situation, where there was a request by the previous property owner, by signed affidavit, that said, "This is not my primary residence," and I believe they had a residence in Florida, and Utah's is like many other states in, in the country where you can have one primary residential exemption. So, I would assume this individual had the exemption in Florida, but he could not also have it in Florida, so that's why he filed the affidavit back in two thou, for two thousand and twelve. Once the property transferred ownership, we weren't aware of the taxable status, or if it should have changed. That's why the information is put on the valuation notice and on the tax bill, so the property owner has the ability to see how it's being taxed, and they can approach the board.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I think that we do our very best on identifying those properties and making sure, when we can, that they're designated right. I think the issue that we ran into in the last little while is that certain population, when they purchase are unaware, and maybe they're not aware of the difference in the, in the laws, maybe they move from out of state, and our form doesn't delineate it in a manner that is easy for those who aren't looking for it to identify it. So I guess what I'm asking is, can we do something on our form, when it's a non-primary residence, that really gets someone's attention when they look at it? So they, they start this process of looking into it, because once they look into it, it becomes very apparent that it's in, in their particular case, and, and so, they would hopefully then start this process earlier and not have this issue where we, it, it ends up being in the Board of Equalization, but they don't hit the deadline. I think that's what my concern is. Because, because really quickly, what happens is, in a situation like this, as much as we want to approve this, we really can't. And so we need to address it for the future, understanding there's an issue here, how can we address it so we don't have this same issue coming up next year? That's what my question is.
I understand your question, Commissioner. We do have a number of appeals annually that do, it's just like Ms. Holdsworth appealed two thousand and fifteen based on that issue. That's a Board of Equalization question, and we, you know, consist, we can constantly...
I can speak to that. So our, the clerk of attorney's office issues the property valuation notice in July, and that property valuation notice does have the primary, non-primary designation. For this year's statement, we actually removed P and NP and replaced it with primary, non-primary. So that no longer should be a question. I believe it was this year, it may have been two thousand and fourteen, but for sure, it was the two thousand and fifteen valuation notice that has been updated, so that you don't have to worry about the acronyms, and the designation is right there, right next to the listing of the property.
So it's easy for them to see, because what my concern is, is not, so, I'm married to probably the smartest person on the planet, and she understands all this, but if I were just to look at it and look at my taxes, and it said non-primary, that may not even be a clue to me, that non-primary is taxed at a different rate. So there may, it may behoove us, if it's non-primary, to have a star, or an asterisk, or an attention, that nonprimaries are taxed a different rate, something along those lines. Because, again, what happens is, we run into this dichotomy, right, where it comes to one board, but that's not the right board, and by the time it goes to the board it should go to, we've passed a deadline. Because we can't create these precedents, and we need to go by the state law and statute, we don't have a recourse to offer citizens on something that's a very easy fix for us if they're, if we make it easier for them to identify. And I, and I think you're trying to do that, I'm, I just was making sure that we started that process.
That's a good point. If I understand, if I remember the form properly, right underneath the section that describes the property and the primary, non-primary, is a second box, which has to be separate, second box that indicates primary is eligible for the forty-five percent exemption.
That was my only question.
Sure. So I, I am sympathetic as well to this, because of the fact we've seen them, but I think that the common thing is, is what's been explained today. I can see it happening in my life. I'm, you know, I'm busy, and, and maybe, you know, this is not something that I deal with every day, and so I, I get that tax form, and, you know, the last thing I do is, is dissect that, every, every word, to make sure that it's in, in good shape. And, and it puts us in a really tough situation, because we want to be, I think we've said this before, but we want to be as, as fair and lenient to it, to the taxpayers, especially if it's an innocent mistake, as we possibly can. But the, unfortunately, the state law doesn't appear to allow us to do that, and that puts us in a, in a tough situation. In fact, it kind of frustrates me that, that they have to tell people, "Hey, you can come to the county commission for a, a, appeal," and then there's really nothing that, that we can do about it based on the statute. And so that, I mean, that makes it hard. I guess we can, guess we can overturn it, and then, then we get to spend a little bit of time, whose gal maybe, I, I, I don't know what, what it is we, we do, but it's, it's frustrating for me, but anyway, that's where we're at, so.
Commissioner, would you like to take action?
Well, I would like not to take action, but I'll make a motion that we deny the request. Sorry, I'm lost. Thank you. We, we jumped ahead. I make a motion that we deny the request from Deborah Holdsworth to change her primary status for two thousand and fourteen.
For two thousand and fourteen, thank you. So it is corrected for two thousand and fifteen at this point? Okay. And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Yes, come on up.
Last year, when I came in to pay the taxes, and I noticed that they had gone up a couple of hundred dollars, so I asked the lady at the desk when I was paying that, because this is my first time, and I mean, I've just moved here to Ogden, and I said, "Well, why has my taxes gone up according to the previous owner?" And she's like, "Oh, it's probably because your property taxes, your property value has gone up." So I did question it at the time, and I think even, you know, just for FYI, for your reference or something, that maybe inform the people at the front desk, you know, when you go in to pay your taxes, if this is a new resident, and maybe have a, you know, a red flag for them, so that they can inform people as we're paying our taxes.
Good advice.
And I did inform my real estate agent that was with me. She was unaware of the N and the NP slash P, and, and so she was going with her title company, and she was going to address it with them as well, to get the word out there and inform people in the future, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, we'll move back to the top of our agenda for Mr. Larson. Request for discussion and/or action on the two thousand and fifteen Weaver County Local Transportation Fund project priorities.
Commissioners, good morning. A pleasure as always.
We're excited to talk transportation, Douglas.
Yeah. Infrastructure.
Yeah, the spine.
It's all economic development, right?
Right.
Everything we do. So, as you're certainly well aware, we, we help the county and the council of governments manage two sources of local funding for transportation under sections of the Utah Code, and I'm going to cite this for the record, fifty-nine dash twelve dash twenty-two seventeen is our quarter preservation funds for transportation. The other section is seventy-two dash two dash one-one-seven point five. That's our third-quarter cent local transportation sales tax. Both those sections of the code require that, that the COG collectively prioritize, prioritize how they're going to spend the money each year on projects that are associated with the regional transportation plan in our region. And we have set out an annual application and prioritization process that starts in June of every year, and typically works through October and November of each year. So we, we've obviously gone through the first phases of that process. We had applications from the various cities and county, making application starting in June. The COG's Transportation Subcommittee reviewed those requests and made a recommendation to the full COG on October fifth. And that list that you have in front of you was the list of transportation projects that were approved by the COG, again, on October fifth of this year, and the statute then requires that what they refer to as priority lists be forwarded to the county legislative body for their consideration. So you have in front of you the two thousand and fifteen project priority lists associated with the Weaver County Local Transportation Funds. It runs across ten brand-new applications. We included two amendments in that list as well. In total, we're, we're asking you to approve with the amendments just over eighteen million dollars in local transportation funds for the two thousand and fifteen cycle. And I would just add this, we started this process, collecting this revenue, in two thousand and eight. Since that time, we've, we've provided funding for, currently or programmed into the future, almost forty projects now. We've, on local funds, we've contributed almost eighty million dollars, and we've, we've now enabled almost a hundred and seventy million dollars in transportation projects that would not have happened without this funding. So with that background, and with the information in front of you, we're asking you to approve the two thousand and fifteen Weaver County Local Transportation Fund project priority lists. Any questions?
Commissioner, any questions?
I just noticed that Ogden City doesn't have any, any requests in for this year. Is there a particular reason that Ogden didn't request any, or had they had some projects in the pipeline they've completed?
They, they didn't indicate to us this year as to why they made the choice not to make application. They were certainly successful in two thousand and fourteen, though.
They've had some big projects in the past.
And, and if I could, I just want to, we have several from Pleasant View, Merritt Slaverville, Weaver County, Upper West Haven, I guess, Harrisville, North Ogden, South Ogden, so, you know, all the cities are, are very involved in the transportation.
Yes.
And remind me, Douglas, but it's my recollection that this was unanimously recommended from the COG?
It was unanimous. Thanks for the reminder, Commissioner.
All right. What action do we need to take?
We need to approve the list.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two thousand and fifteen Weaver County Local Transportation Fund project priorities list.
Okay, and I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Item number two, Douglas, is the approval of the two thousand and fourteen Transportation Funding Agreement by and between Weaver County and Ogden City for fund capacity and improvements for the North Street Project.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. So this project came out, as you indicated, of our two thousand and fourteen approval process, funding agreement, our standard local transportation funding agreement between the county and Ogden City. North Street is the northmost signalized east-west roadway linking Wall Avenue, Washington Boulevard, and Monroe Boulevard within Ogden City. The project's purpose and need is to widen Ogden's, again, northmost east-west collector roadway, to address current and future traffic demands, install improvements at Monroe, at the Monroe Boulevard and Washington Boulevard intersections, to reduce vehicle delays and improve public safety, and to, and to deal with residential frontage needs such as broader roadway shoulders, shoulders, and contiguous sidewalks. We will be contributing three hundred thousand doll, up to three hundred thousand dollars in right-of-way funding, and up to two million, seven hundred thousand in sales tax funding for this project, and we'd ask for your approval of this contract.
Questions, Commissioner? None. Okay. Resolution?
Three hundred ninety, contract three hundred ninety-seven.
I'll make a motion that we approve contract three hundred ninety-seven, which is an agreement for the two thousand and fourteen local transportation funding between Weaver County and Ogden City for fund capacity and improvements for the North Street Project.
I'll second. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Douglas, we got one more for you.
Thanks again, Commissioners.
The local transportation funding agreement by and between Weaver County and Harrisville City to define the terms of the Larson Lane Project.
Yes, which was just this project as part of the two thousand and fifteen list that you just approved. Harrisville was anxious to get started on this. They're actually very successful in getting some property donated and wanted to move that forward. So the Larson Lane, Washington Boulevard intersection will provide a much-needed, and I kind of highlight that, much-needed additional left-turn lane from Larson Lane onto Washington Boulevard. Some of the existing traffic on Larson Lane is from Harrisville City residents, but the majority of the traffic is from pass-through vehicles originating in North Ogden City and Ogden City. During heavy traffic periods, the left lane is totally inadequate, and the waiting time for a left turn onto Washington Boulevard is extremely long. The widening of this intersection will also require that the existing traffic and pedestrian signals be relocated, and UDOT has kindly agreed to fund the relocation of those structures. So with this agreement, the county will be providing up to a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars from its third-quarter percent sales tax for transportation fund, and we'd ask for your approval of this contract, if you don't have any questions.
No questions for me. How about you?
No questions for me. I'll make a motion, we approve contract three ninety-eight for the local transportation funding agreement between Weaver County, Harrisville, to define the terms of the Larson Lane Project.
Okay, and I'll second that motion. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes. Thank you, Douglas. Appreciate that. And I, I just, I hope you'll pass on to the, to the cities. I, we, I think it's a neat thing to see these cities, each of them, taking on these transportation needs head-on as, as a community, and grateful for the tools that, that we're, that we have at our disposal now. We, we hope that that's not the end of thinking about transportation, but we, you know, it's good to have this process, I think, in place that's been successful for years of prioritizing and, and putting these projects forward, and I think that it'll be even better now that they can match a little bit with, with local funds that result of Prop One, so. Just appreciate all your work on the issue. I know it takes a tremendous amount of your time, but as you say, it's, it's all economic development.
Yes, it is.
So we appreciate that.
Thanks again, Commissioners. If I may, Mr. Chair, a little latitude, you commented earlier on the four H flag. Just like to thank you, we had the four H awards here last night, so we certainly appreciated the use of the facility, so, thanks so much.
And for me, when you say it's all economic development, I, I'd say for us, that means it's all prosperity for our constituents. That's what we're looking forward to, so. Appreciate that, and glad to have the four H kids in our building. Hope that helps them to learn a little bit about what we do. Okay, item number four, I don't see Rod here. Is there somebody here that's supposed to be presenting this on, for Rod? Has he left a representative? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. Commissioner, do you know anything about it? Would you like to go ahead and present it, or should we skip it until next week?
Let's skip it, I don't know anything about it. I'm sure Bell would be.
I'm hoping it's not a, something critical that has to be done this week, but it doesn't look like it, and where I don't know much about the contract. I think that's probably our best bet, unless we feel differently, so. So we'll ask Shelley to put that on next week on our agenda. We'll move to item number six, request for approval of right-of-way contract by and between Weaver County and the Twelfth Street Project. Jared, it's, in this case, it's Kevin and Tina Bailey, parcel one fifty-two. Anything unique or noteworthy on this particular contract that's different from the ones we've been seeing in the past?
Good morning, Commissioners, and no, nothing unique on this one. Just good to get it done and, and signed off.
Great.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve contract three ninety-nine, approving the right-of-way contract by and between Weaver County for the Twelfth Street Project and Kevin and Tina Bailey, parcel one five two.
And I'll second. Discussion to that motion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. Jared, item number seven is yours as well, the request for approval of a contract by and between Weaver County and the Union Pacific Railroad for preliminary engineering services and submittal of Exhibit A for railroad approval.
This is a railroad crossing on thirty-five-hundred West, just to the south of Twelfth Street. As we come, as we're going to come through and reconstruct thirty-five-hundred West, we are going to have to widen that crossing just, just a little bit, but that includes design for lengthening the arms and different things we have to do at that crossing, so this... So this, um, agreement, um, specifies what needs to be done there at that crossing with Union Pacific, or, yeah, Union Pacific.
Okay, great. Is that a pretty narrow crossing right there?
Yes. It's, well, pretty narrow. It's, it's typical for what, how narrow the road is, but because we're gonna widen the road, we'll need to widen that crossing, yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve contract four hundred by and between Weber County and Union Pacific Railroad for preliminary engineering services.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Good to have that project going forward. Jared, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, item number eight. Is Jennifer here? Are you presenting for her? Okay, perfect.
That's not Jennifer.
Not Jennifer. No question about it. Request for approval of first reading of an ordinance of Weber County amending certain provisions of the special events application process. Let's hear it.
Thank you. Good morning. I received a request from Jennifer Graham, uh, to amend a provision of the special events ordinance. The specific provision is Weber County Code, Section thirty-eight, one-six-A. And previously, the, uh, people could obtain special event permit applications from the Weber County Public Works Department Engineering Division. Uh, we're requesting an ordinance change to, uh, change the address of that so that people can obtain the forms from the Special Events Office, uh, located inside the Golden Spike Arena, and, um, also to provide an online access for applications for special events, and so it's a, a minor procedural, uh, change to the ordinance.
Sounds like it might have a large impact, though, on people's ability to, to actually make applications, so.
I'm appreciative of it. I, I know that, um, with our new website release, we're trying to make access to forms, electronically, electronic, uh, either submittals or gaining the application much easier, and this is a big step towards that, so I'm appreciative of creating a more service environment, um, you know, office, so I, I'm, I think this is one of the steps that we've been taking across the board to be more responsive to our, our customers out there.
Okay, ordinance number?
This is first reading.
First reading? I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of the ordinance, Weber County amending certain provisions of the special events application process.
Okay, and I'll second that motion. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposed? It passes. Thank you, sir. All right, to our item number G, public comment. Anyone in the audience who would like to comment today? So please come forward, state your name for the record.
If you've been here for the first time, you're required by county ordinance to talk. No? I just made that up.
Does Kathy McKittrick not know that we have chairs in the room, specially for her?
She's doing yoga.
Okay. Maybe we could get her a plug by one of those chairs so she could not have to sit on the floor.
She looks comfy, though.
That's not very hospitable of us, I don't think, to make her sit on the floor just to get a plug. Okay. All right. Sounds good. We'll move then to our next item, which is the assignment of the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, Shelley, you'll do that. Thought of the day, or, excuse me, thought of the day, Shelley, you'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a volunteer today? All right, thank you, Sylvia. Appreciate that. Always willing to serve. Sometimes she volunteers, and sometimes she never gets a chance to get her hand up before I volunteer her. We appreciate it. And then we'll, seeing no other business, we'll move to our final item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
And I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Thank you for coming.
Happy Thanksgiving.